You needed that one.
Okay, I'm gonna call this workshop to an order here. It's a budget workshop for the city of Holiday Island. Let's go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance, even though I don't have an agenda here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Wes must have either got tied up or he forgot about it. I don't know, he's taking, he's doing some continuing education thing. So, um, you want to volunteer to take notes?
Do we, oh.
I will.
For a minute.
Okay.
I will.
Okay, you wanna take a role just for the equity?
Okay, Mayor Keys?
Here.
Councilmember Elwin?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Graves?
Here.
Councilmember Dumas?
Here.
Okay, now we're all here but Wes, so. Uh, I handed out some sheets, I was doing some quick updates here on the, uh, on the street fund for next year. Uh, there's, uh, what, one, two, three, four pages. Um, because there's different scenarios that could play out. The first two sheets are current year forecast with and without the half mil, um, or the half of the three mil property tax for roads from the county. And then the second two sheets are the proposed budget for next year. Assume, um, again, one assuming that we would have a smaller carryover because of not getting the, uh, you know, the eighty-four thousand in the street fund. Let me say a few words about where we stand on that. I talked to, um, I think I really knows that I called Judge Barr a couple of weeks ago and had a brief discussion with him. He felt that, we'll just, we'll just leave it at the fact that he doesn't think he owes the city anything. And, but he's, he's, I think he's confusing a little bit the, the sum of the tax money that he historically has given to the district and, um, money that would be owed to the city. Uh, so I'm not quite sure that he totally understands the, um, what, what we're talking about here. But he did say that he passed it on to Tony Rogers and he hadn't heard back from him. Well, that was two months ago, so he certainly isn't, uh, can't at Tony's, you know, office waiting for, wait for Tony to, uh, come by so he can get an answer, so. And Tony Rogers has never returned Justin's telephone calls. So, it, it seems like the county has taken the position that they don't owe us any money this year and, um, and they're just not gonna respond. They're just going to run out the clock or?
They're just, they're just done ballin'.
Yeah, just, you know, hope, let the whole thing die away.
You sent out an email a couple of weeks ago about asking Justin to file.
Right, this week Justin was supposed to get me the, um, motion, I think it's called a motion for declaratory judgment, which is a, a legal proceeding where we would file with circuit court. The county would get a copy of it, obviously. And basically what we would be asking the district court or the circuit court, um, or would be an opinion on the, or a decision of the attorney general's opinion that we are entitled to that money this year, in which case the county will have to pass. Um, so, um.
You're gonna have that in time for Thursday?
We will have that in time for next week's, um, city council meeting so that we can, so that you guys can vote on whether or not we should proceed with that, um, legal action. So that's kind of where we stand now. And, you know, since, since it's up in the air, I thought it would be prudent to have two different budget, uh, options to look at right now. And the, the major impact, one way or another, on this county tax thing is whether or not, um, or how much money we would have on hand to cover the city's share of the grant project, um, you know, when, when that time comes. So, the first sheet here shows that, um, if we do not get the, um, the county tax money, we would be looking at a, uh, a fund balance at the end of the year of a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-four. And that would carry forward to next year then.
Oh, that's interesting.
If we do get the county sales tax or the county property tax money, then our carryover balance would be more in the neighborhood of a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So, you know, eighty thousand dollars difference. So when you look at next year, but whenever the project, whenever the hog drive and state line drive refaving project starts, that's when we have to have our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, I haven't talked, I haven't talked to Jonathan, the engineer down there, um, about timing on this lately, but we know that the committee doesn't meet until February. Once the committee meets and awards the grants, then the state still has to go out for bids and they have to select the contractor and they have to get in the contractor's schedule. So, I cannot anticipate, I mean, I can't foresee of this project actually starting before, um, June or July timeframe. But even at that, if it, let's say that we, we have to have our two hundred and fifty thousand in, um, June, the current forecast would be, that would be, we would be about ten thousand dollars short of having that much in, in our road fund to come at that time if we do not get the money from the county. If we do get the money for the county, then we would have the two hundred and fifty thousand plus, you know, seventy thousand left over, so we would be in, in good shape. I guess I bring this up only because, you know, we will have, we will have enough money in reserves in the general fund at that point to cover whatever we would be short from the street fund if we had to, you know, call a special meeting, have like the city council approve transferring money temporarily from the street fund to the road fund. And then by the end of the year?
Mean the general.
The road fund could reimburse the street fund and everything.
You mean the general fund, not the street fund?
What?
You mean general to go to road fund?
Right. We might need to, depending on how all this unfolds, we might need to transfer some money from the general fund into the street fund.
Well, you know, there's, there's another part to that. They have no way of defining payers in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
And that payout is based on when they collect money. And so they would, you would receive, should receive payments starting in January of twenty twenty-two, so.
Right, and what I did for this budget, since I have no idea what, how that money flows in, because they, they collect some money every month.
Right.
Because in January they'll be collecting the liquid that goes.
Right.
From last year.
They, they disperse that the month after they collect it.
Yeah.
Cause I, you know, the, the annuals board got paid that way.
Yeah.
And we got money every month.
So, to, to get an idea of what the pattern is, since Eureka Springs is approximately the same size as we are, um, uh, although their property tax value may be considerably different. Um, Wes has asked the treasurer in, uh, in Eureka Springs to give him the history of payments this year by month that Eureka Springs got, so we can see if, do they get the majority of their money in October? Because that's when most of the people pay the taxes? Or, or how does that fall in? Cause that will affect this cash flow thing too. Now, worst case scenario, in my opinion, is that we find out that we don't get money from the county this year and most of the money from the county for next year doesn't come in until the end of the third quarter. Well, I still think we could work with the state and say, "Schedule our project for late in the third quarter."
Wow.
"Don't put us first on the list to get, to get the project done."
Well, um, there's other ways we could do that too. Just not, not give, not give HICID that forty thousand in December.
Well, I thought about that, but I, I believe we need to, we made the commitment and we really need to live up to it. They have a budget to make, to make sure.
I have two questions, if I may. Um, one is, uh, did HICID receive any road funds this year?
No.
From the judge?
They got twenty, they got twenty thousand last year and this year they got fifteen thousand from the county, but it was for, um, a matching portion of a grant that the county applied for on HICID's behalf. I believe for the chemical storage things.
And.
They did apply for a grant, for that, I believe, yeah.
It didn't have anything to do with.
Doesn't have anything to do with roads?
Actually.
No? And it wasn't, it, it wasn't the county's money?
Right.
It came from another source other than county revenue? So, uh, so that would make it hard for the judge to make a case that I've already given this year?
Well, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't.
I mean, he may be, he may be thinking they gave it, but he didn't, right?
Overbid, you know.
I mean, we're gonna take two hundred and some thousand dollars out of the county's coffers this year and so you're gonna be.
Well, that I know, but that's not because he was generous and gave part of his money to HICID.
You're gonna have a heck of a time getting to be generous.
Well, I understand.
Our problem is, we sent them, we sent the county a letter
Yeah.
and we asked for an official response so that we all knew where we stood. They have never made that official response.
Still haven't got it, yeah.
So we don't know what they're thinking.
Right.
And, uh, we don't know that, I, we, we have reason, I have reason to believe that the judge is confounding the money he gives to the district with the money he owes, the county owes, um, the, the city.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking too.
Own conversation I had with him, but we don't, we don't.
Don't know for sure.
Official position.
My other question is, uh, these amounts that you have in here for the estimated share of county property tax, uh, that would possibly come in this year for September, October, November, and December, they are wildly different from month to month. Why is that?
Because, um, uh, I didn't know if, if, if we, it, it was just a witch.
That, it was just, you spread it out that way?
It's just wacky.
You know, it.
I would have divided by four and put it, a fourth in each box, but.
For the, for the budget for next year, I figured that, that the total would be eighty-four thousand and it was evenly.
But I shouldn't take that to mean anything then?
No.
Okay.
There's no significance to that.
Okay, that's all my question was.
There's certain months that you can get more than others and so much you get off those months.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're not very wrong numbers, so I must have used some sort of percentage of something, but. All right.
I think it's just scientific people out there.
Yeah. A li- a little trick I learned in quoting projects to customers.
Makes it look official?
Yeah. Take, take a number and multiply it by one point oh one five to make it a really oddball number so that it looks incredibly accurate. Or.
He didn't mean that.
Or, uh, something Lynn would appreciate.
For manufacturing, I do appreciate it.
Put a, put a dimension on a print that's four decimal places accurate and then measure it with a scale when you make it.
Or worse, a caliper.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's kind of where we are on the road. There's, it all comes down to whether, whether or not I would, I would get something from the county this year. Once we know where we stand on that, we can pretty much firm up our budget for next year.
Surprised that how, how small the road turnback is without, without that county one. Pretty small. Has our justice to peace done anything on our behalf? No. No?
Has what?
The JP.
I, I talked to Jack and, uh, and, um.
Chuck Bowles and Chuck.
Oh, yeah, which names would come to me a little easier. Um, they both said they were looking into it. They, uh.
I.
They were aware of the situation. Jack had seen the attorney general's opinion and he went and talked to the people in, you know, at the county. He said that technically he shouldn't be involved in it. You know, he shouldn't be getting in between the city and the county, but he would, he would do anything he could to try to help get it resolved. And basically, he came back with the, the same story that the county had initially and that's that they're collecting twenty twenty taxes now. We weren't incorp-, we were only incorporated for one month in twenty twenty. So the most we should be owed is one twelfth of the tax or whatever is collected in December and, uh.
At the very least, we ought to demand that, that sets a precedent that they owe it.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't.
But I, I explained again to Jack that, that the law doesn't care for what year the tax was levied. The law simply says the year that the tax is collected, that's how you dish it out. And, uh, so.
But I think, thank goodness, you know, they're all around. We're gonna have to use the, the court to try to get it.
Oops, somebody else here.
Right.
But if they don't respond to the, to the, uh, the motion to, or declaratory judgment, I think the judge can rule in our favor if they try to stall that.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, well, I, I think the sooner we get that, but, you know, that they're up there to this. They are not going to respond. They're hope, just hoping we'll go, give up a little way, have to respond to it.
BJ just joined. Do you want her to take notes? No?
No, she doesn't, and she doesn't have to stay on if she doesn't want to.
Did you hear that, BJ?
I did. Um, you don't need minutes for the meeting?
Lynn is taking notes. This is just a workshop, so it's, the notes aren't gonna be very extensive. And, and Lynn will take the notes.
Thank you.
That's fine, I'll, thank you. Bye-bye.
Yeah.
Bye.
Okay, I can move on to the general fund.
Yep.
Um, I put this in a different format. I have to, uh, to kind of take the same format of the, of the accounting software, well, so that Wes could, could have a little easier time loading it into the software and that we will have, you know, official, the software-generated budget documents for next year, but.
What would take, uh, what do I want to say? Issue with lumping all of that in non-departmental. I think, yes, I think you need to split out administrative as a separate department. I know that, I know the district is non-departmental for all that. I would like to see, you know, it started out with administrative, now.
Well, then you just change the title.
Yeah.
From non-departmental to administrative.
Well, it is all not, it's not all of it, but most, the bulk of it is.
What, what's, other than maybe economic development, which is only five hundred dollars? What else would be, what else would you break out as a different department?
And then take the lift here, sir. Economic development, you get five hundred to attract a snow cone stand. Uh, due to these licenses, preferably would not be legal this time. Advertising promotion is not, economic development, no research publication. Most, all the rest of it probably would be, okay. And just, you know, I mean, you're, you're setting this up for the future, so I, I just think about it, okay? I would like to see it broken up in the two periods.
But then wouldn't you have to put the IT stuff that the, that's there, uh, that they are using in their administrative capacity into admin?
I didn't, I didn't say take it out.
But you also have some in there for potential, uh, planning commission people too, so.
Anyway, I think it needs to be broken out. The administration is, will end up being a big part of your cost if sometime you want to be isolated. And then the sooner you start it, the easier it is. Anyway, but for what we're doing right now is fine.
All right, under, um, the planning commission then, which is one of the, uh.
Is that a little annoying now?
Yeah, unless somebody adds a question box, something in the non-departmental. I basically put all of the revenue, I think, in non-departmental.
I think your cost on two additional workstations is way too low.
Two additional?
It was on the second page at the end. You had a thousand dollars.
Non-departmental last listing right above Ms. Williams.
Under information, I'll take that. The, uh, estimated cost of two additional workstations. How much do you think it should be?
I don't know, you remember that number I gave you in an email?
That's a far better than the.
I think I copied you on that note, didn't I?
Yeah, you did, I don't remember what.
I mean, I copied Dan on it too, I think. I'll get it to you, uh, but it's.
It's costly.
I mean.
Twelve fifty per, sorry.
Well, yeah, you gotta pay for the laptops, for one thing. That's gonna be costly and then the monthly costs for all the hardware and software and support, it's gonna add up. So.
I should buy it now.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
But take a look at it.
Any other questions on, uh?
Let me, let me, just real fast. Yeah, um. Um, the advertising and promotion, the, the only thing that that's covering is that subscription to the North West, that's all it.
That would be it.
We're not going to do, try to do anything further than that.
Everything we spend on all of this takes away from police player, uh, so is it more important than, uh?
I think, I think HICID can still fund the rest of the advertising, HICID.
I mean, I'd like to spend more, but, uh, well, until we get our reserves built up, we'll have, uh.
Maybe collect some of that AMP money.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't think we're gonna.
If we get going.
And when that would.
I'm, I'm a little, you know, we still haven't gotten over to talk to the sheriff yet and I'm a little bit concerned about what, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm a hundred percent convinced that they're not gonna put another deputy out here with the forty-eight thousand dollars a year. They're gonna have to, the sheriff's gonna have to go to the Corum Court to get that approved. It's an additional head and additional power and additional gear and all the expense that goes with one more control. And that's why, um, I was, I voted for our budget up to sixty-five thousand. I'm getting ahead of myself now.
Yeah, are we jumping to that page?
Well.
Yeah.
Yes, I, no, we don't have to, but that's why I really scrimped on everything else as much as I could, because I'm a little afraid of.
So are we waiting on Danny Presley to go with you or the sheriff coming on to meet you?
No, I'm waiting on Danny, but I'm gonna quickly put it soon.
I would think sooner than later. I mean, we, uh, I mean, we're, the county bid in November.
Yeah, when's the district gonna finalize their budget? This next meeting? Cause they haven't had too many discussions.
They don't approve the budget until the Senate, the county doesn't.
No, but.
District, the district.
The district has to have it.
When is the district gonna finalize their budget?
They have to have it done.
Historically, we usually.
It's always before the first of December.
Before the election. Right, it has to be done before the election, so they haven't got.
It doesn't have to, but it should.
Yeah.
Well, they only got two weeks to vote.
Yes.
But you're right, Gary, we're running out of time. I did tell, you know, Chuck and, and, um, and Jack. And for the record, I don't talk to them together. So I'm not having an illegal meeting with the county board.
That would be their problem, not yours.
Yeah, but I don't wanna be the one instigating.
You were saying to the.
But I did, I did touch bases with both of them that we're looking at adding a deputy out here, which we would be coming to the, somebody would be coming to the.
The whole problem with that is the Corum Court has never allocated them the additional slots make up for the people that they send over here. So they, they immediately end up with a personnel shortage for, for the rest of the county.
Yeah, I had that discussion with Jack and Chuck, so.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully they're thinking about that one.
Well, you, you gotta remember, you got nine hundred JPs from the other side of the river and they don't give a rat's.
Jack usually runs the budget discussions though, so.
All right, planning commission.
Oh, can we go back to the, the, uh, public safety before we move off of it?
Oh, I didn't, I was gonna, I was gonna go back.
Oh, if you wanna go back to it, go ahead.
I'm gonna go back and get back in order here.
You can do that.
All right, planning commission, six thousand dollars, kind of an arbitrary number, but, um, it's a number. I think it'll cover any publications or anything that we have to do.
Question I have from these departments that we have here, throughout the year or at any time, can we adjust, say, take three thousand out of this and put it into a different account? Or are we stuck with only spending it here? If we don't spend it, we don't get to spend it.
The city council can make budget changes.
Okay.
I mean, anytime during the year, just.
Reappropriation, right?
Yeah.
I read that the Corum Court does that all the time, and so I wonder if we have that privilege too.
It, you know, it should be done with an ordinance.
Yeah.
To amend the budget.
So, what are we gonna do about filing space and, and are we gonna need filing cabinets and more rental space here? and more rental space here?
Well, based on, based on our last meeting that we had with Mickey and Doug Taylor, if, you know, I'm optimistic that we're gonna get those, the files, we may have to pay a little bit to get them. Um, the planning commission's lawyer told them that they can't give anything away, but they can sell anything for a dollar. So, Lynn wanted to hand him a dollar right then and there, and say, we'll take all the file cabinets and files.
So, they do have file cabinets that we would get?
They had all, they have all the files and file cabinets.
Okay.
If, um, now, they did wanna talk to Tom, you know, out of respect to Tom, they, they wanna talk to him about, you know, whether or not, you know, he's going to put up a plate or, you know, to keep him, or how it has any interest in him.
How big are they?
With a wall full of cabinets.
From that corner to that window.
Wow, that's a lot.
But there's enough space in the basement here.
Well, that's why we got, we got rid of the couch and stuff in the office down there.
So, so we would take over one of the apartments down there?
No, I think that, I think that wall in the office down on the other end will accommodate the majority of the...
Oh, you think it's big enough, okay. Wow.
That's why we cleared out that, that wall, I mean, there's some wood base.
That looks like a lot more space than that wall in the office.
Yeah.
It's a long wall that they have down there.
Yeah.
We can get a couch on the other side.
You may, you may be able to burn some.
My, my, uh, my visual image of it is that we could get them in down there along, along that wall.
I, yeah.
And if we, if we can't get them on one wall, we can turn the conference table ninety degrees and put them on the other wall too.
Yeah.
We'll get them in there one way or another.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So...
You know, if we find ourselves too cramped, in some future year, we can look at more space.
So, their only assets that we would require, acquire are the files and cabinets?
Yeah, I, I don't, we really don't know yet, I mean, they have a computer, but I don't know how new it is, and, but it does have all their records in it, so...
Did we ever locate all the restricted covenants for all the units?
Not yet. I haven't made the trip down there, I need to do that this month.
Okay, so you're gonna check there and probably with the county for any others?
I've gone through the county records with my search tools, and I only found three, I didn't even find the other thirty-five that we have.
I, I figure they have them in a filing cabinet someplace, don't you?
Well, they may, they're not stored electronically.
Yeah, I wouldn't think they would be.
So, I haven't made a personal visit, ask that question yet.
I thought, I thought the district also had the cabinet.
Uh, he's been through all those, they, they don't have them all.
Well, we, we think they don't have them all. There may be a lot of units that don't have them.
That's what I was gonna ask.
It's possible, possible. If we can't locate it, I guess you could assume there isn't one.
What?
Till someone can prove otherwise, right?
You would. I mean, yeah, what I just read here said, you know, basically people who are used to the game by you for building laws.
And so if we don't have one, we'll have to, you know, we'll use whatever we have, which is our own invention, if you will.
The ones that are missing are very small parcels, I believe.
In the document, they will...
They aren't large pieces of property out here.
In, in the document that we'll cover in the next meeting, there's a section that lists the ones that I don't have, so people know which ones they are, that I don't have.
I have a copy of that right here.
Okay.
All right, let's move on then to buildings and construction, which is basically the building inspector.
Mm-hmm. And, um, I, I, reading that as we are going with the concept, hopefully that we're gonna contract with it.
That's what I'm, I'm...
Are you talking about contracting out the building inspector position? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, that was, that was my question too.
That would be very easy to do.
Um, you know, they, they, they would either be under contract to do it for the fees or whatever compensation we, we, the city gives, the, um, and the building inspector would be equivalent to what I've looked at, is eighty-five percent of the fees, which would fifteen percent reserve because of the overhead costs, but, you know, to keep them all record.
Well, yeah.
And then you said somebody else would be writing the, what, the violations, the...
The code enforcement officer would be, that's a different...
Different position.
It's a different department. I did a, just a, kind of a wild guess, projection on how much, um, revenue would be generated based on the fee structure that's in the draft of the building code, and, um...
Okay.
You know, and certainly it all depends on how many building permits you issue, but that's why I wanted to make the fees proportional to the inspector, if we don't issue any building permits, we certainly don't need a building inspector.
Right. Are these fees higher, lower, for the same kind of...
The, the, um, the building inspection fees, I mean, the building permit fees are the same as the current planning commission, what I add is inspection fees over and above that.
So, they don't do inspection now?
They don't do inspection, and they have no fee schedule for it.
I think anybody getting a building permit, they have to do inspection by it.
I don't think you can get through there.
Yeah. Um, now, just, just to put things in perspective, I went onto that Little Rock site, just their fees, just their fees, is seventeen pages in the municipal code.
Takes a lot to take care of a city if you have government doing it.
Yeah, it, uh, for, for a, you know, we're, we're looking at about eight thousand dollars in revenue, and that's if we build, you know, six houses and have some additions and all kinds of things.
Do you know what the...
A half a million dollar house being built in Little Rock, that's about what your fees would be, just for your house, 'cause, I mean, they have fees for everything, it's, it's so many, so many dollars per ten thousand square, or no, per ten thousand dollars on the project cost, they don't go by square feet, they go by project cost, but then you pay for, oh, we got five toilets, okay, that's, uh, and you got...
Really?
Holy man, seventeen closets, oh, man, look at that. And then when you get to inspecting, it's almost the same thing.
Do you have any idea of this building boom that we have this year, what the current planning commission is running?
No, and I've asked that question a couple of times, and, and, um...
It's a tightly held corporate secret.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that, they just don't know, that they, their accounting system doesn't give them control, so they don't know.
I think, uh, you know, I think a good estimate is, I would say, estimate is, is that you don't get, you only get some history.
But, but, yeah, the plan going in is we're gonna try to match our expenses with our revenue. And, uh, so, if we get a lot of building activity, and we'll have a lot of expenses, what we should have matching revenue.
I think this is a good estimate, you got four thousand dollars to build the place for permits and four thousand dollars to inspect them, I mean, that's a good balance.
I thought it was very conservative, but I think that's the way to go.
Well, it says if you balances the expense to income, it doesn't make any difference.
That's right.
Well, you still get fifteen percent income.
But, yeah, so, it isn't, isn't excitable.
Well, if there's a lot of building going on, it won't be.
Yeah, that's right. All right, code enforcement, um, you can see what my assumptions that are, were on expenses, I figured twenty hours a week, and twenty dollars an hour times fifty weeks, and then I applied the appropriate percentages for payroll employment, workers' comp, and I put in an assumption for vehicle allowance, and then just put in twenty-five hundred dollars for other expenses, 'cause there, there will be expenses for, um, you know, we, printing and, you know, mailing letters.
Well, they also continue to court cost.
I don't expect very many cases to actually go to court, I think very few will actually get that far, um, and if they do, there would be fines and court costs applied to that too.
Do you foresee this person needing a computer?
Mm-hmm.
So, are those the two computers you're thinking of, building inspector and code enforcement?
Yeah.
Not one for the planning commission itself?
I don't know.
I didn't figure one for the planning commission itself, I guess we can add one in.
Just wondering.
We talked about that at the last meeting, I think, and Lynn's using his own.
A brand new one.
Oh, it's a brand new? All right, nevermind.
But with that said, why, why couldn't the planning commission and the code enforcement officer use the same computer?
Perhaps.
Yeah, all they have to do is, I mean, the, the, um...
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, the, the code enforcement officer's gonna need a computer for basically three things, looking up the, you know, code violations, so that when he writes out a citation or a notice, he can pull the proper evidence that's being violated, then he'll need to be able to generate official city documents, and then record keeping.
Probably keep it in an Excel document or something.
Yeah, and also, he, he didn't necessarily have to have a computer, he could have an iPad or a laptop or something more...
Access it over the internet, maybe.
Yeah, he, he, he can do it all right here. Of course, he can't write many tickets up in the mountains, but, no, he would.
But that's a good point.
He's gonna do the, and he'd take notes and, and everything.
Now, he'd hold his iPad out and take his pictures of the violation, I, to me, that sounds like a good solution.
That's a good idea, that does sound like a good idea, absolutely.
I mean, you also get them, you know, the keyboard and...
You can, yeah, part, part of the, the cover, yeah.
You, you do that, you do that with one of the things I got, it's, uh, irons and over for...
Okay, we'll file that, file it away.
As I say, a ninety dollar box like what Pat has would do a lot of it. I've got two of those in a drawer.
I got a forty-nine dollar candle?
Well, mine's more than a candle.
I don't know, I got one that'll do everything you need, forty-nine dollars, irons and over.
Well, sharing, to answer your question from my point of view, sharing that device, you know, because I have this thing on forty hours a week doing the work that I'm doing now, in the future, there'll probably be less of that, so it may make it difficult to share one device between two people for two different tasks, but...
Well, and there's always the case that one person's gonna step over the other person's work and knock, wash it all out, too.
Yeah.
Unintentionally.
Just wait and see.
Yeah.
That's, that's not that big a deal.
We'll go as we go.
Wait and see what happens, see how it works out.
Okay.
It would seem like you could add a, like a, just a dumb workstation, that you would have to, you know, some sort of password to get into, your own particular files that you were working at that dumb...
Kind of partition it off, in other words, so to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think, I, I think it makes a lot of sense for a code enforcement officer to have one to take out in the field.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
Something portable.
And to take the picture on it, yeah.
Take the picture and, and have the bill or the, uh...
Have a form right on there.
The municipal code loaded right on it, and, uh...
Yeah, I mean, you can get one of those iPad minis or Androids for that.
Yeah.
Okay, the, you know, the, the one question that I would have had if I were you is, is twenty hours a week.
Oh, enough.
And, um...
Actually, it's too much.
Well...
I think it's good for budgeting, Dan.
I do.
It's a good estimate.
I, I had, I had a nice talk with somebody that's interested in the job, actually.
Really?
We spent quite a bit of time talking about it, and, and it was a good exchange of ideas, and, um, the way I put it to him is, um, you know, we can, we can make as big a job or as little a job of this as we want. My, my approach is gonna be to make...
Sorry, that's my computer.
To make a list of priority properties that have, you know, just some serious problems that we need to take care of, you know, it's probably not gonna be initially more than six to ten properties, um, and we'll work on those, and, and if that's what we're working on, it would seem like twenty hours a week would be plenty.
I think you'll find that if you actually do something with some of these bad properties, I think a lot of the elements will take care of themselves.
Hopefully.
I don't, I don't think...
Well, since we're, since we're new at it, I think it'd be prudent to go ahead with the twenty hours a week and see how the job, if it grows, we can modify it.
You know, you drive through some, you know, virtually every city has a code enforcement officer, you drive through some, it's pretty obvious, the code enforcement officer doesn't do anything, or the city council or the city has no interest in enforcing the code, so... All right, next page is public safety, I grouped, uh, police and fire under public safety, 'cause that's kind of the way the, you know, the Arkansas code would kind of want you to organize the city, and, um, under the police department, I put in sixty-five four for a deputy, and I think I've shared this with you before, is that how I came up with that cost breakdown, that's, you know, salary, benefits, and, uh, vehicle operating cost and, and acquisition cost and utilization, you know, I don't, I don't see why the county would necessarily want us to pay more than that, but I could see the county expecting us to cover the, the entire cost of having a deputy, not just the salary, which is all we've been paying.
So, would this vehicle be one that we purchased and...
Yeah, that's...
And, and put it, put our own sticker on saying...
I don't think so.
Holiday Island?
I don't wanna do that.
I haven't put some...
So, what, what are you thinking, we just give the money to the county?
We would have a contract with the county for, for the annual depreciation or annual utilization of a vehicle, instead of having to come up with the static cost of the vehicle.
Okay, so this is just your estimation of what they would charge us to use their vehicle? Okay.
And, that'd be easier to come up with, just pay enough, you know, so much of mine. I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, that's what we had to talk to the sheriff about.
Well, you need to do that pretty sure.
It'd be my preference in this, that we just put on what we're going to pay for, that we don't tie the district to our budget in any way, but that's my position. So, you know, rather than a one and a two, we have a deputy.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that was just my notes.
Well, I think the fifty thousand, you know, I don't know what they're paying those guys, or, but I, you know, the figures they banter around are like twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which, from your, like, your...
The salary and benefit costs are basically gotten there, that's basically what Aaron was making.
So, for our budget, we'll just have ones, one through twelve, basically, the other notes below, just for our workshop.
Yeah, the, the notes below, it's...
Okay.
Anyway, I don't, I, I, I just, a good estimate.
Now, just one comment on the point about keeping them separate, keeping them separate financially, budget-wise, and everything else, I agree, but I think that in order for us to pay for one entity and the district to pay for one entity, and that'll all kind of make sense of the... entity and that it all kind of makes sense, a company would be to have an interlocal agreement between the three agencies, the three bodies, that says that, you know, this is the coverage the sheriff is going to provide to the district and, you know, the, the other two parties, the, the city and the, and the district are going to share in the cost for this one or something like that. But it, it'll have to be some kind of interlocal agreement. Otherwise, it's going to be, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to get into a situation where the district thinks they're paying for Aaron and we're paying for deputy, you know, Z, and deputy Z quits and, you know, so now, you know, does the city quit paying or, I mean, if...
Okay.
We're going to, I think we're just going to specify what the coverage is supposed to be and what the city's going to pay and what the district's going to pay.
So when we get to that...
Signed by all three people.
So when we get to that detail in the contract, we need to spell out that case, that if deputy Z is gone, that we don't lose any coverage or there are going to be a penalty to the county sheriff in our contract.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I realize they're deputies, but do they, do you have the mayor any control over him and where they are?
He's the police chief, according to our resolution.
But I mean, they're going to, these people are going to be serving three masters, from the city, the county, and the high city.
They, they work for the county.
So if the, the sheriff says, you know, we don't need you to go to Holiday Island today, we need you to bring the forest.
No, that'd be in the agreement.
Okay.
But I, I've already grown up, uh, drafted an interlocal agreement, sort of copied off of the, uh, the Port Shu Ben agreement that they had with the county down there. And it specifies things like...
Coverage hours, okay.
And, uh, you get, I think, you don't, you don't specify what deputy is going to be out here. You don't specify how they're going to provide the coverage. You, you specify what coverage is, is, you know, being contacted for.
And they, the sheriff can pull them out for an emergency, so.
Yeah, although the Port Shu Ben contract is pretty tight about that, about pulling, you know, I think for, for emergencies, yes, you'd have to have some sort of joint, you know, agreement, but, but just because they're shorthanded tonight in the county doesn't mean that they can pull the deputy out of the house.
Yeah, if the deputies be spelled out, well, then that's hap, that hap, that's what happened a lot.
And what about the idea that, um, it, the, the deputy can also write traffic citations that the money goes to us?
That's, um, we have to have our own, that's something we'll have to end up doing. We have to, after print up our ticket books and...
So, I mean, that, that sort of suggests that the city has some master role.
That's a start, that's...
They would be in place, city, city traffic laws.
Right.
Stay in...
Okay, that'd be in the interlocal agreement also.
Might have been for six.
I don't remember if I put that in there.
Unless you might have those ninety's good.
It ought to be in there.
Some of ours said that, I was going back for the...
There's law enforcement officers in the state of Arkansas and enforce, watch, watching on YouTube, that, all levels of, uh...
But they may have to appear in district court then, too.
Yeah.
You know?
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, it's two fifty-three.
Okay.
So we have seven minutes to our next meeting.
Good point.
There's very little, nothing has changed on district court since we met the last time. The rest of the tailwind was a budget meeting. If that's what I found out, I thought that was a six. No.
No.
No. Okay. So, uh, we, we came up a little short in the budget, so we're going to take it out of the first salary.
Oh, okay. You mean the next first salary.
Why didn't you start hearing that thought?
What?
All right.
Basically, you got to it.
So that, that's basically, uh, I, I assume that, you know, the way things are going, um, we'll start out with about sixty-two thousand in the, in the general fund. That's after putting some in reserves at the end of this year. And if this all unfolds the way I would hope, um, you know, we would, we would run a surplus again next year and be able to put a little bit more into the reserve fund.
I agree.
And I would, I was just looking at that to get ready for the six o'clock meeting. Uh, I'm thinking there very well could be a little more than that at the end of the year, too, because our county sales tax money is running more than what's in the budget.
Yeah.
And if they started using twenty-twenty census figures yet or they...
Last month.
And there wasn't any appreciable difference in...
I figure about three percent, we're getting about three percent more of the county, you know, on our share of the county sales tax.
We did talk about the, uh, the street fund, but I can update, uh, that.
Okay.
Right, sorry. All right, so we're pretty close. Hopefully, we'll, not hopefully, we'll, we will have more information on the sheriff's contract before we finalize the budget to approve in December and, uh, you know, that's what we need. I believe that's...
Lynn, I was going to send you some numbers about, uh, equipment costs for land.
Yeah, yeah.
One other thing that just occurred to me, if the code enforcer needs a, an iPad-type device, we might want to consider one for the building inspector, too, because they're going to have to record their inspections and violations and things like that. They're going to need to do that in some way, and it needs to be saved. I mean, that's part of the building code, right?
Yes, definitely.
So...
They have more record keeping done there than anybody.
I'll do a little research on that, too.
Be nice if we could get the computer from the planning commission, but my guess is that that's probably not, was there actually a CRT hooked up to that?
No, it's a laptop that they have hooked up to their printer.
Oh, it is a laptop?
Mm-hmm.
For some reason, I had this mental image of seeing a CRT up somewhere.
Does anyone even know what that is anymore?
We equip them both with an iPad and a laptop, whether it's that spice.
Yeah.
When you do it. So I would rather the sheriff do it.
You can do everything on an iPad, you can do on a laptop.
They had an iPad. I suppose they could come to the office, get on the internet, um...
Transfer the files.
And transfer files and stuff.
Sure.
To get it backed up.
Sure.
That's probably what we...
I bet they, they do that kind of stuff in other cities. I can talk to a computer, see what they can come up with.
Well, the city that I was on the council, we had three building inspectors slash code enforcement people, and they all carried iPads.
Good.
Or some, or some kind of board device.
Yep. It is two fifty-eight.
All right, motion to adjourn the workshop.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To adjourn, okay.
All right, I had, I talked to the assessors office.
I need to make a business assessment.
Okay, how do I...
You have to pause the meeting.
Pause the recording, that's what I want. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the Holiday Island Planning Commission to order. Uh, it's November ninth, it's three oh five in the afternoon. I think we'll dispense with the pledge since we just said it an hour ago at the last meeting.
We have changed our mind.
Yes. Lynn, you want to call the...
Chairman Keys.
Here.
Vice Chair Bitman.
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Secretary Dumas, here. All present.
All right.
And it should be noted, we have one person visiting us via Zoom.
I'm going to, so we have two. Wes is here and, and a distinguished resident of Holiday Island. Is anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, I said one.
One?
One.
So we have three people. All right, I believe there was minutes from the last meeting to approve.
Meeting from October nineteenth, our last regular meeting.
They were distributed, I think, in a copy with them. I really did minutes. I was seconded. Ken moved to approve the minutes. Pat seconded it. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Approve. And at this point, I'm going to turn the discussion over to Lynn.
The rest of our agenda, we have no standing reports and no old business. The new business is a discussion about, uh, proposed zoning regulations. And I distributed copies of documents that I acquired after looking at multiple cities and landed on a community named Tontytown in Arkansas. They happen to be represented by the same attorney that we do. So I thought that would be a, a good basis point. And the model that I picked, I picked it because it was simpler than some and it covered a lot of the bases that I think we'd be covered in a text type format. Um, as we've talked in the past, there were others that were more than a few hundred pages long of lots of detail, and we may get that, get that far someday, but I think we don't need to be that far for now. I did distribute a, a copy of an outline, which basically is just a little bit of a rearrangement of the topics that are covered in the, in the zoning regulations that are here. So I wanted to point out that, uh, because the city has made a, a decision in its land use plan to, I quote in quotes, "to defend the covenants," in other words, to do as much as we can to make certain that the covenants that are in place on our properties are supported by ordinances that we pass, that those covenants are awkward in the way that they describe how land is used for zoning and mainly because it's by unit and block rather than, like Tontytown has, you know, like most cities, they have square streets and nice straight lines and they have neighborhoods they define easily. Even though they have a business in the streets because a highway runs through town, they, they're simple, their plans are simple. Ours may be a little more difficult to describe other than sticking with the descriptions of unit, block, and lot that our, our properties are named after. The covenants in our land use, the names are not the same in the regulations that I copied. I didn't want to go to that effort of recommending new names yet. Want to make sure that we have what zones that we need to describe before I work with, trying to match them up with what's in the current covenants. And the, the conditional use isn't defined in the covenants. Conditional use, when you say an area is going to be an R1 and someone comes to you and said, "I'd like to put a, a mom and pop candy shop on the corner," so you, they're asking for a, a variation. None of that is described in our current covenants. What they've done is take exceptions, that all of this unit is a certain land use except for certain blocks and lots are separated out. So they, they took it in that method rather than giving a conditional use within a unit. So that's going to create a little bit of work on our part in how we're going to describe, you know, what's permitted, how, how activity is going to take place. So, and then the, the basic thing, or the, the thing that I thought was really significant is our current covenants don't have definitions section. When you look at the Arkansas statutes, like under alcohol, there's a four-page document describing what all the terms in the law mean. Uh, I look at other covenants, including this, or not covenants, when I look at other zoning regulations, including this one for Tontytown, they do have an extensive description so that it takes the, helps take away the arguments of, well, I want to use it for this, but it really isn't that. And we in our ordinance can point to a, a use that's described, and you can see if what they want to do matches one of those, and then we can go to our other ordinance that says it's permitted or it's permitted under conditional use or it's not permitted at all. So there is an extensive definition section in this set of regs that I, that I recommend that we review. So any questions to that point? I didn't intend for the conversation today to be me doing all the talking. I was hoping that, you know, there'd be a lot of input from you folks. And my plan then was just to go through that document, starting with page four of the front end, and just scan through issues that I have highlighted that I think need some attention on our part that are in the, the document. I used a, a naming or a marking scheme of the yellow or the words that I added to the, the document for clarity to identify it's ours. Then I used a blue highlight for areas that I think need attention, things that I don't think fit necessarily with Holiday Island or we need to take out entirely and replace.
The ones you marked reserved, uh, the sections I marked reserved.
Yeah. Those are topics that we don't think need to be addressed right away. I just took the text entirely out.
Okay, landscaping, screening, fencing, you don't think, that, that, I saw that, didn't you?
It's not included here. It was in the original one hundred and seventeen-page piece that I sent, but the sixty-nine-page version, it, I took the text out for landscaping, screening, fencing.
Those were, those four issues are not in that.
Yeah, there's more than that, but yes.
Well, they're, they're expanded, yeah.
There's quite a few that are marked reserved, like landfill for exclusive use, landfills and planned unit developments. The goal is to get zoning ordinances in place so that we have more than what we have in our land use plan. It simply says, "We're going to do the best we can to defend what's in the covenants." So when the planning commission meets in the near future or a, um, what's his title? The, the guy who does the building permits.
Yeah, the building inspector.
The building inspector. When he sees plans, he'll know that, well, we're going to have to rely on the covenants until we get zoning regulations in place. So the sooner we do this, the better off we're going to be for the builders and for the residents of Holiday Island.
Okay, so, and all these things where you got the yellow mark, that's what you added your own way.
Yes.
At Tontytown.
Yes.
Okay. And...
I was wondering, um, you left the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the Administration and Enforcement at the end of the code, like I suppose it was in the Tontytown code.
Well, in the numbering scheme that's on there, the fourteen dot number is what's in the Tontytown code. The fourteen is mine. Their is actually one fifty-three, if you go do your own research, but I just replaced it with fourteen. I moved it to the end because I kind of thought it was logical that we would have the rules of construction, how this thing is put together, the one hundreds, or in this reference one hundred, the establishment of the districts and boundaries, and then actually naming them with how they're going to be used, the accessory uses, and then some conditional applicable certain uses as a list, and then the general standards of, you know, these are the dimensions and that kind of thing. And then non-conforming is not like everything else, so it's different. This flood thing, I thought, was governmental. I'd leave it in there for at least to start, and then put the administration part at the end.
Okay. I was just wondering whether, because you might be referring to those areas in previous chapters, whether it would be better to have them at the beginning or not. It was just a...
Yeah.
Thought that flew through my head.
The convention that's used in their regs is to reference them by number, that, you know, per zoning.
So you could look at it at the end.
Yeah, you'd say fourteen dot two sixty-one or something like that.
Okay.
So that, that's just the, the scheme of arranging it. So as I started down this document, I'm, I'm scanning down this, and on page six, I made no notes that are any different from this text. And that's why I was hoping that we, you know, as far as the discussion would be, if you guys have read this to go, "This is pretty weird," or "This doesn't really fit," did you make any marks like that in your, in your research? If not, we'll just go with what I've marked.
Here's a general question I had.
Okay.
I think I can say it. Um, that, you know, they have so many more zones than we have in the covenants. I mean, just, it's broken down into... I mean, just, it's broken down into way more level of detail. Do we need to go there?
No, I don't think so. I think we need to design these with what the covenants have in them.
Okay.
And that's why I said I didn't.
So that's your thought for how, what we should get to?
What we'll end up with, yes.
Okay.
I just left all that there so that if nothing else, it's like, oh, it sparks a thought, maybe we should have a zone for the future. And that's, that's one thing I, when I was thinking about the commercial areas and the descriptions and definitions, that the sooner we put things in place, the better off we're going to be in the future. So if someone doesn't come to me or come to our planning commission meeting and say, "I want to do such and such in this area," and I'm going to do it because you don't say, "I can't." And so we would be putting the fences up and not have to try to close the gate after they've come through.
Would having more of those zones create less opportunity for conditional use?
They probably would, but we should be wise about what we say they're zoned for so we don't create a negative impact. But what we want to do is preserve the safety and the welfare and those five words that are used in the codes that we're supposed to do to protect our community. So, you know, if we're looking at a parcel that isn't zoned by a current covenant and say, "Well, you know, they could build a three-story office building in the middle of that area with, well, the neighbors might not think that's too hot." So we would probably zone it against that.
I just, I had a thought that when I answered my own question.
Okay.
I was thinking, you know, you made a comment about limiting the opportunity or the need for conditional use permits. I don't think we want to discourage issuing conditional use permits, especially if it's an existing situation. Let's say that there's, there's a, a unit here that says you can't, I don't know, you can't have a ice cream shop on the corner, but somebody has an ice cream shop on the corner.
So grandfathering sort of, sort of.
Rather than, rather than saying, okay, well, we're going to zone that one property commercial so that they can have their ice cream shop and want me to conditional use permit, I think we would want to issue a conditional use permit because if at any point in the future they stop being a ice cream shop, then that conditional use permit goes away.
Or they sold their property and the next one wants to be residential.
Anything that changes, anytime something changes to the status of that property, that conditional use permit can be made to go away. And then they would have to conform to the rest of the area.
What do we, I mean, now that just spurred my thought, this, the property over here across the street, which is all zoned commercial, but is largely residential on Bluewater.
But it's, is it residential or is it short-term rental?
You see any, well, that, that can't be commercial anymore apparently, right?
Short-term rental is commercial.
Well, I mean, if it's a B and B, if it's a residence used as a short-term rental on Airbnb, I think somebody circulated something recently that said that's against the law to make it commercial.
I think we need to look at that further because, again, that may not set general precedent. The, the, some of the things like Bluewater, I think, unit 10 is a real mixed bag of zoning.
Unit 10 is R2, C1 and C2 according to the covenant. And the Cs are, there's some conflicts between units when you call it C1 or C2.
So like these condos, the condos on Bluewater, you know, may not be a violation of the covenant because it'll always be there. Now, going up the street here, I was told that Perry Presley was allowed to build those houses because there's nothing in the covenant that says you can't build residential in a commercial. You can't, the covenant says you can't build commercial in a residential. And somebody told me that, that there's nothing that says you can't do residential in a commercial. And it came up, it came up up in the, up in the park.
In the park?
When the guy that owned the pavilion and stuff there before, before Brad Handby bought it. He was actually living on that property.
Oh, that's right. He had his own unit, though. He, he was his own unit. I remember when that property sold, it was his own unit. And they wrote a covenant strictly for that unit.
I thought that was in the same unit that was the elk lodge.
Well, it might be, but I think it's separate.
How are we, anyway? How are we going through this anyway?
Well, I'm trying to get back to it. We're going to cover it one page at a time.
Okay, let's do that.
All right.
I don't know where the hell I'm at.
All right, on top of page seven.
Let's take control of this meeting here.
Top of page seven, in the document, it's 14 dot 021. The very second sentence, it says, "It also contains definitions for the uses identified in the text and I insert it or intended to be used to the later date." To answer Linda's question and my response a moment ago, that we may have zones in here that are not currently being used. Is that okay?
Yes.
They possibly could be used at a later date or something.
But is it okay that we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only option to that would be to add them as we go.
Well, my concern was adding them as the go, as we go is we may be faced with trying to close the gate after cows have already gotten out.
And three, three months to a proven ordinance, too.
Excuse me?
Three months to a proven ordinance or pass an emergency clause.
Right.
Because this is in an ordinance.
And then we would face the issues of taking away value and all those kinds of things. So I'm in favor of creating them ahead of time.
After we enter, right, you know, if the, if we're, we're fully do that.
Yep.
At the bottom of page seven, I left the definition for bar empty because I didn't find it in this, I thought that was odd, it's not in these regulations, but because our covenants have the word bar in them for permitted in certain commercial areas, I thought we ought to define what a bar is. And after looking at a lot of state statutes, but I didn't find the answer I was looking for in, and a couple others, I found this definition to be, "An establishment in and on the premises for the consumption of alcoholic beverages by the drink or in broken or unsealed containers or sold. This shall also include tavern, saloon, pub, lounge and other like-described drinking establishments."
That sounds good.
I'm trying to think, does Arkansas even permit straight bars?
That's, that's what I was going to bring up. I hear about the drink ordinance specifically limited to dining establishments that can seat 50 people, have a full menu, a kitchen capable of preparing everything on the menu to avoid bars.
I don't think we, I don't think we got bars in.
I said, our current covenant has the word bars in it. So that's why I put it in here. So if we can't defend it, if we can't permit it, then we shouldn't, it'd be one of those areas that we can't do, we can't do that.
In other words, the city would prohibit it even though the covenants might allow it?
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, well, they stayed allowed. I believe you could just take that out.
Well, if the state doesn't allow it, how do you explain the ones that are down along Highway 23?
Well, they're in Missouri for one thing.
No, excuse me, down 62.
Oh, okay.
The Rockin' Pig.
That's, they got food.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is basically a restaurant.
You've got one outside Berryville that just opened during the summer. It was like a series of hotels.
Yeah, yeah, that strip there.
Down that little strip there.
Is that a bar?
They call it something, saloon.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, it was for bikers largely. But they might have served food, you don't know. And you could be real
You can't get a
Creative that way.
You can't get a liquor license if all you have is a hot dog machine and a popcorn offer.
They usually have, they used to have a percentage that
Oh, the sales or
Certain percentage of your revenue had to come from food, but they, I think they took the percentage out.
You know, there's no percentage. The, the basic guideline is you have to meet the definition of a restaurant.
Okay. So I probably should take this out of here, that's probably why.
So you're saying that's state law?
And it's state law.
Okay.
So that's probably why, that's probably why Tontitown didn't have it. Tontitown didn't have it because we can't be permitted anyhow.
Yeah, good point.
I'll just take it out.
Okay.
I don't want to ask this question, but I'll ask it now.
Sure.
The, all right, I, if, the state prohibits us from contradicting by any city ordinance, anything that's in the covenant?
No. What happens in a, in a suit is usually the judges, the courts let the more restrictive rule apply.
Well, I actually posed that question to, to Justin and he said he's never been asked that before, so he'd have to do some.
Well, again, I know you all tired of hearing about me and my previous experience, but in about one time, when we passed an ordinance or ran the zoning ordinance variation, that covenants were ever mentioned, ever.
We, did you have covenants?
Yeah.
But those were like private communities where you had covenants, weren't they?
Well, you can have covenants.
They could be more They could be more restrictive than the city would allow.
That's why, well, I'm not talking about them being so restrictive, I'm talking about us being handcuffed from making the area more restrictive.
How could you be responsible for reading and knowing all the private covenants on any land, though?
Well, Jerry, when we get to the point where, where we talked about specific restrictions, then it might be easier to have that discussion about, you know, is this more restrictive than the covenant allows and?
Well, I brought this up at one of the other meetings. It's, you know, I, I mentioned specifically the house on Holiday Island Drive that had the fifth-wheel RV parked right next to the building. And I was told that covenant, you can't prohibit that, that the covenants allow that.
Right, are.
But, and my question again is, can't we make something that's more restrictive? I mean, when those covenants, there was no city. Plus, you've got, how many, 13 to 15 units you can't find?
I, I think the answer is we could, we can pass ordinances that are more restrictive.
Right.
But we can't pass an ordinance that allows something that's in, that's prohibited in the, in the covenant, is the way I would approach it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with that because, because I think we would be inviting a challenge that the city was illegally extracting value from the property owners in a particular unit by allowing something by ordinance that they as property owners decided they didn't want and put it in their unit covenant.
I guess the classic example would be if the city passed an ordinance that said, "You can have a B and B anywhere." And the, and the covenants say, you know, that's, you're running a business in a residential area.
But that's another debate, too.
We got that conversation. There's going to be some serious discussions on those rentals.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, I mean, the condo that I had right down the street here was owned by residents or part-time residents and, but they were managed by a business out of Eureka, which advertised them on that website, also listed them on Airbnbs. And if what man sent out is, is precedent, I mean, that's all people have to do.
The, what I'm following when I'm clipping articles is there's so much still up in the air with, between the state and what cities are doing. And there's been some guidance that we could probably take from Fayetteville and Little Rock that they've done their homework. And there are some things we could do, I don't know what they are, because I haven't studied that specifically. But some of the things that are in those, I've tried to include here, like trying to define what short-term means, because that term wasn't here, but we're going to talk about short-term rentals. So that was one of the definitions I added. Okay, top of page eight, I added the definition for bedroom because there are ways to control in an area of living of how many people are in a building. And some cities have chosen two persons per bedroom or so many people in the whole house by bedroom. So I thought, having a bedroom definition of a room for use as living quarters within a dwelling that includes a closet and requisite number of exterior windows of sufficient size and placement to conform to the National Fire Code. I did that because there were people that could claim this four-by-six closet is a bedroom, so I put two people in it. But I said it should have a window and a closet according to fire code to define what a bedroom is. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's standard to have a window and a door.
Couldn't, couldn't a dining room then qualify as a bedroom?
If it doesn't have a closet and a window, it can't.
Oh, the closet part.
I didn't, I thought about, does it have to have a door? But I thought, no, I won't go that far.
But I think that the realtors can't claim anything as a bedroom that doesn't have a window and a wall.
In the community I came from, a basement room couldn't be a bedroom unless the window was a certain height off the floor and a certain distance from the ground up above.
That's exactly right. That's what, when we lived in Indianapolis, we had a major, major guest that, that room that could count as a bedroom.
Because it didn't meet the National Fire Code or their building codes. So that's why I added a definition for bedroom. It may need to be fixed. Building height, I put that in blue, the vertical surface from grade plane to the average height of the highest roof surface. That's different language that's in the covenants. I think every covenant says the house can't be above 25 feet above the highest point on the lot, something like that. I was going to copy that text if, if I should do that. So our building height ordinance should probably read like the covenants do rather than this. It's so many feet above the highest point on the lot. All the covenants have that language.
Yeah, because otherwise, how, how do you define the grade plane on a slope plot?
Well, you, you take the survey and you take the highest point, the lowest point and divide it by two. That's how you get an average.
About the grade plane?
Because in the, in the building code, I think, or maybe it's in this section, I've read it someplace where if you're going to build a house on a lot, you have to provide a gradient map. What do you call that? The slope plan of the lot, whatever it's called.
Slope plan, yeah.
So you have to show what those elevations are on your lot. Okay?
All right.
Carports.
You're going to reword that.
Yeah, I'll line it up with what the texts from the covenants say about the highest point on the lot. Carports.
Let me just make one consideration. There's a lot up here on state land right before you hit the four-way stop where it's like goes down like this, but it's all in dirt and you're creating a level spot. The highest point of that lot's going to be?
The street.
The street.
So they could build up to 25 feet above that, that street level. That's what our covenants have. And that would have been very, I guess the restriction would have been the same thing, the grade plane, the average height of the highest roof surface. So it's just a different reference point. This is talking about a grade plane versus the highest point.
Is 25 feet two stories generally?
I think it's under two stories, plus a roof.
Okay.
Because you figure nine feet for four, then the pitch of the roof on top. Carports, it's a subject that we've had in several conversations, whether it's over coffee or even this room, so.
Or whether it's metal.
Yeah. What are we going to do about carports, guys? What, what are we gonna do about carports, guys?
That should be connected to the house.
It doesn't say that in the covenants. I think it says it in the planning commissions regulations.
So you could set it away from the house and have a place to park a boat or something? That's the question, I guess.
Yeah, that's the question, what are we gonna have in our zoning for carports?
Four poles in a room.
Yeah, that's, that's, we're having a conversation, discussion.
Uh, the building, the building code prohibits metal carports.
Okay. Is it a space for housing and story to motor vehicles and enclosed and not more than two sides by walls? Is that what's in our building code?
Um, I don't know that the building code specifies what illegal carport is.
Exactly.
But it says what you can't have, and you can't have a metal standalone carport.
So it needs to be attached to the, I thought it had to be attached to the residence.
Is there a reason, uh, that it has to be, it can't be a metal freestanding? Or even just a metal with four poles if it's right up next to the house?
It was, I guess, deemed to be aesthetically unacceptable.
Because there are some units where that wouldn't be unacceptable at all, it wouldn't seem.
Yeah, actually, I think the building code says except in unit one.
Okay.
The definition here, is that what you had, or is that what was already there?
It was already there, all I did was highlight in blue, just to bring it up. That's what Towne County uses as a description of a carport.
The only other thing, you, you know, you have that other, it must be a similar kind, you know. Needs to be attached, you know, similar.
A similar roof, con- consistent roof?
Uh, but you're saying that it, it allows the carport to be separated from the residence.
This is a definition of the word, we have to, I, I guess I could do a word search and find out where else it is in the, in the, uh, in the reg. We're gonna run across it at some point. They're just defining this as.
The, the similar material is, is a residence or something.
Well, that's more of a regulation rather than a definition, though. That's more of a regulation than a definition.
Yeah, you're talking about defining how, how to be constructed and whatever, so. Just keep it in mind, so we'll leave it on here for now, that, uh, we have to keep it in mind as we go down through it.
Okay.
Okay, scrolling down then, and near the bottom of page nine, the definition under dwelling, a single family. They have text in theirs that says not including travel trailers, mobile homes, and manufactured housing less than twenty-four feet wide.
Where are you moving?
In a dwelling, a single family, near the bottom of page nine.
Oh, you moved over to a new page.
So, a single-family dwelling is a dwelling designed for or occupied by one family only and being on a permanent foundation. And then they put a comma, not including travel trailers. Maybe, okay, maybe I misread it, they're probably saying that a single-family home is a home, but it doesn't include trailers and mobile homes and manufacturing. Okay, so that text is probably okay.
Well, I think.
I thought that text was.
The only thing I would take out of there is ma- manufacturing, with less than twenty-four people at it. Because that's saying, then, then you could have a manufacturer just a little over twenty-four people. No, I, that's a.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what it says, so if you had a manufactured home that was thirty-three wide.
Twenty-five feet wide, you, you'd fail.
It could be considered a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, so I think.
I think we're safe in the regard that manufactured homes over twelve feet wide can't be pulled down the highway.
Yeah, but they can be double-wide and they, you put them together.
They can't be more than, the, each section can't be more than twelve feet, but you could have three twelve-foot sections, have a thirty-six-foot wide home.
I think that, I think the one they had at the, the government mansion for a while, the dry, dry wire or something. I don't, I don't.
Uh, that's what's in there, so.
I think, I think we're up.
My concern when I wrote this was that, that these wording to prevent trailers upon foundations to be considered a single, considered a single-family dwelling, and I think, having the right understanding of what they're trying to say, is that it does not include those.
Is mobile home defined?
Uh, yes, I believe it is. Scroll underneath.
Uh, so.
Mobile home is defined, yes.
Good.
They are manufactured housing, and they, they, that's one quarter of the line off, or is it one quarter?
Yeah, both of those are defined also, so that's good.
Manufactured housing is too.
Yep, it's in there too.
The government. Why would you want to exclude?
Well, there are some manufactured, well, I don't know what they call them, but when they, they bring the sections of the house on a flatbed and you stack them all together, you end up with a house that's thirty-two foot by sixty feet, it's pre-manufactured. Are you gonna tell me a pre-manufactured home of that style and that construction should not be considered a single-family dwelling?
Well, a lot of places call them modulars.
There you go, modular.
Yep.
That's definitely different.
Yes, it is.
Is the word adult defined?
Adult?
They do define it.
Uh.
Nope.
Not specifically adult.
Would you take that to mean a person over the age of eighteen?
Well, I think we could probably rely on some state statutes that define the word adult. We may have to put it in here, you're talking about the adult entertainment.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of the family that has a college kid who lives in the basement and sleeps on a fold-out couch.
Well, you got manufactured housing, define that manufactured, as in, as in, as in, as in. So, that's consistent with what you got down here, so.
Well, then.
In that situation, they would be violating that single-family dwelling.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, and the next one, under townhouse or rowhouse, I added the word contiguous roof because of, in dwelling, townhouse or rowhouse, the very next definition, and the triplex definition.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep. So the two or more single or multi-story dwelling units attached at the side or sides or contiguous roof. What I had in mind was they could build a duplex or a triplex that has carports between them, but doesn't have, they're not truly attached, but they're under a contiguous roof.
Well, the Wedge Woods, uh, they do have, some of those have carports between the units that have a covering.
Okay.
A contiguous, there is a contiguous roof.
So I thought it'd be okay to put that in here, I thought that would help describe how we want to, them to be built in Holiday Island.
You don't have that on the duplex, though, do you?
Um.
The contiguous roof is not there.
Well, on, it says townhouse, row, two or more single, multi-story dwelling, well, there you go.
Well, I, I suppose du- duplex is a separate item.
Oh, yeah, right here, there's quadplex, multifamily.
Have you got more?
Well, they're, they're just rolling up above.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, I see.
Oh, yeah, I did have that under attached dwelling, or dwelling attached, a dwelling that is joined to another at one or more sides by a wall or walls, and then I added or contiguous roof, so that would cover the duplexes.
Okay, okay.
Again, these are our zoning ordinances, how do we want duplexes and triplexes built? We want them to have a contiguous, contiguous roof.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, next page, uh, at the bottom of page ten, under group residential, I have the word residential occupancy, so it says the use of a site for residential occupancy by groups of more than five persons, not defined as a family, typical uses include residence halls, boarding, or lodging houses.
Would that new drug center in the park fall in that category?
I don't know if they live there or not.
They do.
They do.
They have a kitchen and bedrooms and bathrooms and?
I assume, because they are living there.
Yeah, they live there.
Okay, just the definition for group residential.
The old medical plaza across from the post office, next to the Elks in the park. It's a, it's a drug rehab facility now, and they, it's a live-in facility.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They're all the time?
I just had the word residential because the word down front is group residential, so, okay, we're gonna have residential occupancy rather than temporary or something. Okay, I just wanted to make it clear, I thought. Okay, next page, hotel or motel. The concern I have is we may need to include, uh.
We ain't gonna rent our motel out by the hour. We can probably change to the hotel motel.
Can, can we start to pay for an hour, we don't think we need a half hour.
Half time, or recording.
Yeah, that, that's on tape, Dan.
I included the N or short-term accommodations because of the articles I've been clipping from newspapers and what's going on with the state about VRBO and Airbnb, that they are either considered or not considered hotel or motel type business. And it might be that, uh, we should have the words short-term included in the definition.
And I think that's fine. If you're gonna put short-term in there, then you gotta try and divide the short-term.
It is, later on.
What about a hotel that has permanent people, is that permanent residence?
Ah.
The short term.
Would that, that, you know, the statue road in has some permanent apartments.
Two or three, over on sixty-two.
Mm-hmm, that take permanent.
Converged on an efficiency apartment.
Yep.
And, and, uh, our hotel here, he's doing the same, he's to the backside. He's gonna have some, uh, or permanent apartments because of housing shortage and, uh, basically putting the staff up in them, and then he's gonna have the hotel rentals up front.
In, in this, uh, in zoning, that would be like R two, it'd be multifamily. They'd have to be in an R two type accommodation, because it's long-term living in more than one family in the same roof, under the same roof.
What, what, that kind of brings up the question of what, what would we do in the case of a, a structure, an improved, improved structure that falls into two categories?
What happens in, from what I've read, is that it's considered a, um, non-conforming use and what Dan had talked about, that we have, uh, regulations in place that say when that non-conforming use changes, then it reverts to the, to what it, it has to change to what it's going to be, can't be extended.
So you, they, they're, they're over there as a C two or something?
They're operating non-conforming, if it's a, if it's a residential area.
But if they, if they operate it, part of it as a R three, then it's a non-conforming for the C two.
Or the R three.
Temporarily at least.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, yeah.
So.
I think the VRBO Airbnb thing is gonna have to be a different definition in there, the definition come to itself.
Where is that one?
As opposed to calling it hotel motel.
Hmm, oh, yeah, I think it has to be separate too.
Because all I did for short-term was, not a short-term rental, but I just had the term short-term to define the timeframe. There'd probably be a definition that we create when we do the zoning for short-term rental, what does that mean?
Could we, could we call those vacation rentals or something like that?
Yeah, the state defines short-term rentals as anything less than thirty days. But, um.
I mean, instead of using the commercial brand name of Airbnb.
Right.
Vacation rental, maybe.
I think you got it.
Is there a, wanna agree then it's probably okay to leave N short-term accommodations in that definition?
Yeah.
Alright.
I think, did we get somebody else? No, nobody else.
Okay, when I look at the definition under lot, there's one, uh, for interior, I added any lot which is not a corner lot. And then, as I read through the rest of the regulations, they talk about double-frontage, that's a house that has a street on its front and backside.
There, we do have some of those out here.
Yeah, mine does.
Not by your lot, your lot line, there's a lot line behind you, right? Your lot goes from Rocky Top Circle all the way down to Beaver?
Yeah.
That's one lot, okay.
And there's, there's at least one house on North Star Loop that's that way too, one lot.
I got two lots right there.
Okay, so, because later on in the regulations, we're talking about setbacks, we're talking about fences, we're talking about outbuildings, it talks about interior lots, so I thought we need to include the double-frontage ones here, that's why I added the word.
That's good.
Mobile home description then, on page twelve. I'm concerned about the text that says, well, describes it, and then it talks about mobile homes that are, uh, built prior to nineteen seventy-four, so what are they called when they build them after nineteen seventy-six?
Manufactured home, that's a HUD definition.
Okay.
The same thing, but it's just, I, I think the HUD regulations went in, in nineteen seventy-six or something. I had a claim on it one time, I can't remember if you remember the one of that, but I think that's what it is.
Okay.
Because they call it manufactured homes after that, even though they're the same thing.
Okay, so, because we, the word mobile home occurs in the text we talked about a few minutes ago, it has a definition, but we also talked about manufactured housing, which is defined up above, so we're probably okay.
But do we wanna put in what we talked about, the modular homes, because according to the definition of the mobile home,
Could be.
You could call modular homes the same, because they're transported from the factory.
Okay.
Uh, so that makes the factory built, fabricated before nineteen seventy-six.
Well, I think that definition, eh, if you look.
That's a part of the nineteen seventy-six.
Roll, roll back to page eleven, three definitions from the bottom, manufactured housing unit is a detached, single-family housing unit fabricated in an off-site manufacturing facility for installation or assembly at the building site as a permanent structure, blah, blah, blah. I think that's our modular home we're looking for.
Okay.
They call it manufactured housing unit. Again, I, when I read through this stuff, thinking, well, you know, they've gone through the test of time in writing their regulations, that a lot of this is probably pretty well thought out.
So a mobile home cannot be a travel trailer. A long travel trailer, right, it can't be, okay. It has to be something that's.
Like a recreation.
You can, it's movable, but it's, you put it on a foundation someplace? Or do you have to put it on a foundation?
In Holiday Island?
No, I mean, anywhere, I mean, can't you just stick it on a lot and put some?
That's what a lot of people do that.
Border around that?
Yeah, a lot of people do that. I think it's a registered difference, I mean, if you put it, cut the tongue off and put it on the foundation, it's real property as opposed to personal property.
So someone who buys a lot in unit one and, uh, pulls a mobile home into it themselves and just parks it there and landscapes around it?
Did you go?
What's that called?
An outhouse until they get a permit, you know what I said?
It's, it's got a, it's got a bathroom in it.
That's covered, that's covered in our definition, it's not a single-family dwelling. It's not a single-family dwelling, it's not allowed, so when we get to the regulations about single-family dwellings, you can't take a motorized vehicle or a towed vehicle and put it on a foundation and call it a single-family dwelling.
So even though we allow mobile homes in unit, what, two, one, one now?
One and two. One, no.
Two, they're grandfathered, they can't be new.
They're in there now.
Yeah, they're in there now, one, you can pull them in and park them and do something. Uh, so it can't be that, it, we can't have those in number one, unit one?
Yes, we can.
So, mobile homes.
So they could tow it there, park it, landscape it, and they're done?
Apparently, in, in one, if we write it that way.
Okay.
So, but it's building code will still require that it be on the foundation, so what is a mobile home after nineteen seventy-six?
We just talked about that, it's a manufactured home.
Manufactured, but there's a lot of different places.
Yes, there are.
Hmm.
That's true, I can't, I'm sure other covenants says mobile homes.
That's, that's part of what I said here, the covenants and conditional use isn't clearly defined in our covenants. That's one of the struggles we have of saying, can't take this text from a covenant and make it a zoning ordinance. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna get lost here.
We're down to assisted living facilities, right? No, what, what's taking?
Okay.
Page twelve, then on twelve.
Yes, I added the words under nursing home, any premise including assisted living facilities where more than three persons are housed and furnished with meals and continuing nursing services. Okay.
So Peachtree would be a nursing home?
Well, and when we talk about, when we talk about zoning, if we use the word nursing home, it would include Peachtree as an assisted living. It would fit into that category.
So we don't have an assisted living definition here?
Okay. Is anybody, can you maybe flip, work and I can scroll, there's not, there's no assisted living facility described, is there, per definition in the A's?
Well, what would you, um.
I don't think there was.
In that they have homes up at Peachtree that can be bought, uh.
Those are duplexes.
Well, they're sing, there's like single-family, small homes, aren't they?
Yeah, there's some single-family residences there.
Those are duplexes.
There are.
Are they all duplexes? I didn't know that, okay. Um, so, would, would those be called a nursing home, or would those be called just duplexes?
Those be residences.
Residences, even though they're connected to the same facility?
Well, they might be, they might be serviced by them, but this is a premises.
Yeah, serviced, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not, they're in a different premises.
So it's the building we're talking about here, okay.
Okay, near the bottom of page thirteen, under retail slash service, all that yellow text is what I shrug out of our covenants. There are three different.
Hmm.
Commercial types described in our covenants. They're named, two of them are named the same, but they're different. And, uh, I added those words because they're in our covenants so someone could find that use from our covenant in our zoning regulations. And I think they fit the area of service and retail. I don't think any of them are outside of that, that group.
So you've been, you've done a lot of research on the covenants, I know. Do they exclude businesses other than the ones that are listed in the covenants? Or do they have to fall into a bookshop, an antique shop, a whatever?
In our covenants, there's no, uh, exclusions, no restrictions of what kind of business, they only show what's permitted.
So if, if they permitted these, do they exclude others then?
Not in your covenants.
Is that the meaning?
Right.
These are just examples?
These are the words that are in our covenants. These are the kinds of business that our covenants have.
And, and this just says typical uses included, it doesn't say exclusive uses.
Right.
You can have anything else.
So the covenant said typical uses?
I mean, like you want a butterfly shop or something, I mean, that kind of thing.
I'm sure there are other kinds of shops you could have.
Marijuana distribution.
I thought about that. Well, that.
We're, we're not playing for the day, we don't mind though. You don't have to be painted, you, you, that's just an example. These are just typical uses, so.
That's fine.
It doesn't have to be all.
We can, when, the example that Jared just named can be one of those listed under conditional, that section, it's called special conditions applicable to certain uses. They have adult entertainment, farm animals, car washes, hobby chickens. Dispensaries could be another one of ours to be added.
But not in residential.
That would be part of our, uh, zoning ordinance that would not permit it, if that's what we chose to do. Under the salvage yard, I just added words of things that I see in the salvage yard in the way to Bearville, just so they're covered. Cause he's talking about, the, this is talking about, uh, scraps and discarded pieces of metal, inoperable wrecked, scrapped, ruined automobiles, automobile parts, and they left out the boats and the campers and the mobile homes. They put buses on here, I probably should include that.
Now, I think, I think we can get a few places that will just re, re, rezone them into junkyards and sort of.
Well, again, you're not gonna come up with an exhaustive list of.
Right.
No.
Things that people would collect.
Okay, I don't think that a salvage, junk, record yard needs to be fenced. Where it's not an ice or lack of.
I agree.
In, in one sixty-two, wrecking, salvage and junkyards, I took all the text out, there's, uh, like six or seven pages defining on how junkyards are gonna be regulated.
This is just the definition, not the actual regulations.
Okay, so, top of page fourteen, short-term, a period of time less than or equal to thirty days.
Okay.
Okay. Under street. I add this because it may need to be differ based on what we have in ours. The text says the word street or road are synonymous, no, I added that. I don't know what I did here for sure.
I like it.
This is all my text, I think.
It's good.
Or it's a mix of the two, yeah, I screwed up the highlighting. We said in our master street plan, road street plan, that they're used synonymously, so I wanted to make sure that our definition, when we talk about streets and our ordinances, they can't be misconstrued. Okay. In the, uh, impound yard, I added motorhomes and motorcycles to the list. Next page, under vehicle and equipment sales, I included or added camper and motorhome sales and trailer sales. Not just boats and cars and trucks.
Okay.
And surprisingly, that went about three hours quicker than I thought it would, that's the end of page fifteen, the end of the definitions.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
And it's four o'clock. What does that mean? And, uh, it's bedtime. Naptime. Think you've been, oh, I know, it's happy hour.
Okay, before we give.
We already went over the bar, I think we don't have to.
If we're gonna go longer and cover anything else, I just wanted to make certain that, that we talk about today, if not in discussing it, but to be aware, we've gotta get to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Or the Zoning Board of Adjustment, or whatever we're gonna call it, so that we're, we name it the same in all of our documents and how we're gonna do it. Because as soon as we start approving permits, things are gonna be nice and shiny and clean, everybody's gonna be happy. As soon as we say no, then we have to have an avenue for our builder or our property owner to go to, and that's the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Can we, can we start meeting once a week?
I think every Wednesday, and then every Thursday, and every Friday would work.
I was gonna ask you.
All day.
My question was gonna be, what is your plan for completing this, and what timeframe are we gonna be on here?
Well, what, what I thought we would do is as we go through this, if, if this order is appropriate arrangement of these texts, and we go through and discuss them, and we think we're pretty much in agreement, I can draft the resolution to adopt these a section at a time, and an ordinance for the city to approve, and they become our zoning ordinances a section at a time.
Why, why don't we have work sessions instead of regular meetings?
Well, this was, uh, the right time to use this time for our business.
I know, but I'd say the subsequent ones, to, to work on this.
It's good.
These work sessions.
That would work, I mean, or we could actually call formal meetings and, you know, make, make decisions and approve stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's any, any, having a work session, as opposed to as many regular meetings as what we need.
And we need it, but, and. Are we gonna have, we're gonna do these under emergency clauses, right?
Well. We can, except for the sections that have penalties and fees in them, and those were not permitted to.
Other than hanging away, if you haven't done by January.
Oh, there's no way it'll happen by January because of the time, this is already November twelfth.
That's basically why we passed the emergency one, that February nine could use the zoning requirements, you know, in the, uh, covenants until we have more permanent.
Well, we just need to, we need to schedule enough meetings. Is it a couple meetings a week for the next two months? No, we need to.
Three.
You need to schedule two-hour meetings.
So, you know, there's, there's sixty-nine pages of material here, there's, there's a couple of them that I pasted and a couple of the charts that take up two or three pages, but the materials here, if, at least going through these first fifteen pages, does it look like we're on the right track, guys?
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, because there's things I need to clean up that I haven't even worked on because they're, they're defining these zones that we probably won't even have, and the table's screwed up in the way it paced it in, so. And I gotta put our own in it, not theirs, so there's a lot of work to do, but. Writing the, writing the resolution and then proposed ordinance for the city council to consider is easy work compared to this.
How long does Tonnentown been a town?
They're old, they're old, old, old town.
And I haven't run any of this past our attorney because I leave that to our mayor to talk to. You know, maybe, maybe Tonnentown has sections like, they say, yeah, two eighty-one is really screwed up, we've been working on that for six months and haven't changed it yet. I hate to adopt something they're working on.
I don't know if Justin would know that, you gotta call in Tonnentown and ask him.
I don't think, I don't think Justin can even look at any of this other than the one where we're gonna get into the penalties, et cetera.
I think the only, you know, the, the possible conflict with the covenants is the area that I'm concerned about.
But that's, I'm still not gonna have to look at all this media.
Nah, I, I don't.
I don't think we wanna pay him a two hundred dollars an hour to read all this.
Well, I, I took it from their website, and I think there was enough information on there to tell me it was current. But with your permission, I'll call their secretary and start with her, or him, I don't remember who it is, and see if they have any guidance on any zoning ordinances that are troublesome to them.
I think we need, need to meet again next Tuesday and go through some orders.
Tuesday, if, if we're doing something Tuesday, that's, uh, the same night as the, uh.
Yeah.
The, uh, BLC forum.
I know that that's at six o'clock.
I know.
Well, then.
We don't, we don't golf on Tuesday anymore, so Tuesday morning, nine o'clock works for me.
At what, at nine o'clock?
If it works nine to twelve, we, we should be able to knock out a lot of it in three hours.
I got a parish council meeting to be involved.
What?
Next Tuesday, I got a parish council. I mean.
Parish, parish council.
And I gotta set up for that meeting, that meal, that I don't get to go to the forum.
Well, we could do it Wednesday morning.
Wednesday. Never had anything doing.
Wednesday's okay for me. Wednesday, next Wednesday, nine to twelve.
Nine o'clock? What day is that, I mean, what?
That would be the seventeenth?
Seventeenth. At what time, Dan?
Nine to twelve.
I think if we, if we sit down for three hours, I think we can get through this. Then we can return to the farmhouse for lunch. There you go. Farmhouse bar.
Cause on top of, you know, just doing the text, um, I need to number it appropriately, these numbers, like I said, the fourteen is my invention, because their regulation was a one fifty-three. But the three numbers behind is theirs, but there's been a suggestion, I need to number it differently to fit the immunity code style, so it'll take a little bit of time. But I gotta have the paragraphs in the right spot before I renumber the whole thing. Cause I, there are references I gotta keep track of.
You said, we don't need to deal with the appendixes, right?
Yeah, I, I set them up, we don't need to worry about flag standards, and the appendix B, that's the one that's the big chart of setbacks and what have you, that's why I handed out this little, little sheet. And if I built a spreadsheet that kinda looked like that handout, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Cause that, to me, it's really easy to read.
Yeah.
And the setbacks are a little chart on the side, so I think maybe I'll adapt some sort of style like that rather than text. Sure, it's just a sample of what, this came from, uh, this handout, this arrangement came from Silent Springs.
Well, the, the unit, zone, u- use unit one is a daggers, right?
On theirs, yes. Their, their key is down below.
The P says that's permitted in those kinds of zones.
Yes.
Alright.
So, what the, the language, I think, is in the regulation, if it's permitted use, they don't have to come and get a permit. They, they're just, no, they don't, that's not, they don't have to come and ask for conditional use. Because it's permitted, they still need a permit, but they don't have.
All they have to do is get a permit to build.
Yeah, and there should be no exception for them being granted that permission. It should be easy for the code enforcement officers to say, yep, that's clear.
I, yeah, yeah.
Cause it, like, I copied this one because it had some suggestions on it, just in the regard of coming up with a chart on the right-hand side for setbacks, and then down below, um, there are, there's language in our covenants about the house can't be over a certain percentage of the lot that it's on. You can't build a ten thousand square foot house on a twelve thousand square foot lot, that kind of thing, so. I just could use it for guidance, if, if that arrangement in our ordinances would be okay.
Well, I agree.
I think so, too, chart form, I'll try to work on that then. So, you have the text then, you have the sixty-nine pages.
Yep.
It would go fast if you guys had looked at what I've highlighted that's concerned for me.
Yeah.
Highlight your own concerns, so we talk about more than just what I'm concerned about.
And we'll, we'll just do, like, the next, the section will be, which one we doing next time?
Well, we're gonna do three hours, we're gonna get through a lot of this.
One hundred?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll go all the way through the one hundreds. Alright, let's back up for that. If I'm gonna put. Shall we stick with what's in the covenants? It's R-dash-one, R-dash-two, R-dash-three, and their descriptions. The problem I have with that, it's exactly opposite the way they constructed theirs. Because they talk about the arrangement is in the least restricted to the most restricted, and so it would turn our definitions upside down. Following their format, and I don't know how to flip theirs over to make it match what we got.
But we can't change the unit covenants.
We wouldn't, but we can put a chart on.
It's gonna be confusing to everybody.
We can put a chart on the regulations says covenant R-one equals city R-three, or whatever.
That would be very.
But still, when you're.
I know, it'd be tough, but.
When you're reading the covenant, you won't know what you're reading.
I don't know, it doesn't make any difference. As long as we know that the, that the, uh, ordinance or regulations aren't in conflict with the covenants, what difference does it?
Yeah, I contemplated calling it something totally different, A-B-C instead of R-one, two, three.
I just think, uh, people out here are going to be reading both their covenants, and they're gonna be reading our ordinances to see what they can and can't do.
Okay.
But hopefully, hopefully, over time, they will read the covenants less and less.
I'll see what I can do about.
Zoning, you know, it, it really impacts new construction, and somebody that's intending to do something that violates, you know, the regulations, so it doesn't really. Ninety percent of the people out here, ninety-five percent of the people out here are never gonna carry. They're never gonna build anything.
They're never looking.
They're never in.
Never looking at a covenant. Well, and I found my idea that.
And the language that's in this document that I've worked with, I might be able to reconcile that by taking that little paragraph out, that it doesn't have to do with the fact that it's more restrictive or less, because when you look at this chart, the permitted zones are the R-one, there's only two boxes, you get down to R-four, there's four boxes, so you see there's less, you know, less, uh, less requirements in it, there's more things permitted in R-four, in Silent Springs than there is in R-one. So
So.
I'll just fix that. I'll just, I'll, I'll work on fixing that.
So you're saying, as you proceed down from R one to R four, they become
In Silent Springs. It's less restrictive.
But in there, it's less restrictive.
Right.
So RE is more restrictive than R two?
Yes. Uh, well, yeah, R two has three of them that are marked yellow, or four rather, versus three.
But i- if we were just to use our zoning codes, we would use only, we'd only have R one, R two, R three, right?
And then a couple of commercials.
So I mean, are, are, is there a more restrictive or less restrictive thing about R one to R two and R three?
It has to do with the carports and the accessory buildings and the fences and the setbacks. They're more
I would think that would come from being in a unit rather than being in R one versus an R three.
And that's the, that's the confor, that's the conflict that I have. Unit three, R one, whatever, it also has C two and three in it, or C one and C two. We're going to mark these by lot. We're not going to draw a big circle around these lots or this unit and say, it's all R one. We're going to paint them different colors because they're zoned that way in the ordinance. We're going to create zoning ordinance, or they're zoned that way in the covenants.
So we'd mark all R ones a certain color, R, all threes a certain color?
And the C two is going to be different color.
Yeah.
There is, there is one, maybe semi-important reason to have our ordinance match the covenant zoning because that's how high said the sex was property. By R one, R two, R three, C one, C two. So that would be an opportunity for confusion.
Okay.
If the city, if the city owns my property, R three, but the district was, was assessing me as an R one in their world, it will get really confusing to, especially to new people that move here.
I, I, I guess where I'm coming from is that when I think of R one versus R three, R three is a multi-family apartment building, R one is a single-family dwelling. Where does the more restrictive or less restrictive stuff come in to play? What makes R one less restrictive or more restrictive than R three?
In these regulations, I believe there's text in there that talks about how many vehicles can be parked in front, or the length of the driveway. It has to do with the way the, the properties are used, that they, they have more freedoms in R three than they do in R one. In these regulations. So as we get through them, we'll recognize those differences, and we'll say, yeah, that doesn't really fit here, or it does, we'll have to fix it.
But that's not going to be reflected in the chart.
No, the, the chart just identifies at a quick glance what's permitted in that region. So it's just that when I was reading this and, and came to that section that I, I don't remember where it's at now, it, it's, it's upside down from the way that they're constructed and named here. So I'll, I'll have to reconcile that.
Okay. Well, let's, let's look at it when we get to it, maybe.
You mentioned R one, R two, and R three. Where do the timeshares fit?
T one.
In their owns?
They have their own.
They're a T.
Okay.
They're TH for the townhouses. And they got a separate, because they're separate covenants. Wedgwood is separate from across the street, whatever they're called, is separate from what you got at Table Rock. I don't find a covenant for Table Rock.
Well, Wedgwood Wedgwood is a
It's an HOA.
I know, but those are R ones, aren't they?
I don't remember.
I mean, those
Wait a minute. I do. It's on the chart. It's on this piece of paper.
Each unit is an R one, maybe? They aren't townhomes. I know that.
They're marked Ironwood Townhouse, and Oak Point Townhouse, and Wedgwood Townhouse. They're not R one, two, or three. And I named them in our scheme TH for Townhouse dash W.
Well, they're assessed as an R one.
Well, I don't know about assessment.
Because those people pay the R one assessments. People that own each townhome.
Well, so does the timeshare.
Timeshares, except they do have their own category for assessment.
That's your R one.
Because they don't pay the sewer debt like the other R ones pay.
They have to pay ten times.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, we already fought that battle and lost.
Property owner gets their own activity covered and, you know, owner privileges.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, we got a lot to look at, that's for sure.
And I have people coming over at four thirty, so I'm going to be in trouble.
Well, you didn't plan this very well, did you?
So I need a covenant for one oh seven, one oh nine, and, and one thirteen, which is four divisions of Table Rock Landing. It's got four separate covenants on it, four separate units.
Yep, there are, there are separate units.
What are we going to zone them?
T, TH.
Table Rock Landing probably has restrictions on occupancy and so on, but I don't know about covenants.
TS, call them TS, timeshare.
I have a friend who owns one of those in Oklahoma. I'll see if he
Is he one of the owners that owns a sep, one of the separate units?
Wes
Oh, he owns just a timeshare, and you're saying, gotcha.
Wes owns two of those.
Yeah, he probably does. You're right.
So the reason, the reason we need to zone those is because the next guy comes along might want to do something like it over here. We have to have his own description for it and controls on it.
Yep.
Because I don't want to try to close the gate after they've gotten in.
Okay.
That's my viewpoint.
Well, you propose something, and then we can come back and discuss it and see if we can punch, put, punch holes in it or something.
There you go. Make it better.
Move to adjourn. All right, we got a motion to adjourn. Jerry? Hold on a second.
Oh, I have a chat. Can I look at the chat? Oh, it was Jeanette. She says, I don't think those homes by Peachtree are part of them any longer. They all had to be bought. So, but I, that's kind of the way we were discussing it, that they're owned individually, so.
I have a motion.
I have a motion. Second, ten seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
I'm ending.